Okay, good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, June 20. I was reminded by the city manager today, I had no idea today's my 10th anniversary with the city. So 10 years ago today, I took my first oath of office as an appointee to fill in, fill in a six month term. And here I am still. Time flies when you're having fun. Okay. Our first item on the agenda this evening is a presentation on the fiscal year 2023, 24, 24, General Property and Liability Insurance Program.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The City of Marion recently made the transition to PDCM as the city's general liability and property insurance broker. We've invited PDCM tonight to speak on the policy before, but before I bring them up, I would like to say a few things. For starters, because this is our first year with PDCM, we've been trying to get to know each other over the last six months. What's meant that we were creating this insurance renewal process in a condensed timeframe. Next year, we plan to incorporate the council subcommittee into that process and have more touch points with city council along the way. And furthermore, I really want to thank Pete, the entire PDCM team, especially these two behind me, Chris and Iris. PDCM has been a blessing to the finance team in the city of Marion as a whole, with not only their knowledge regarding municipal insurance, but also just their customer service and how quickly they follow up and the expertise they provide. So without further ado, I will bring forward Chris.
Thank you. Congratulations on your 10 years in your public service.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Acknowledgement. So my name is Chris Faraday. I'm president and CEO of PDCM Insurance. And I just want to echo what Leanne said. We work with a lot of communities around, thank you, a lot of communities around the state. And one of the things that I've really enjoyed to see is as we've had the opportunity to talk with Ryan and Leanne and all the staff, you're creating an amazing team here of department heads and people that are engaged and really representing a vibrant community. So I just want to acknowledge the folks that we get to work with on a day to day basis because their energy and passion for something is exciting as insurance. Sometimes it's waning, but they've really done a great job to jump in and help with that. So.
Someone has.
Randy understands. Yeah.
Well, yeah, we got, we've got an insurance guy right here.
He's the resident insurance clerk. Yeah. So what we want to do today is just walk through a little bit about what we're seeing in the marketplace to help educate council. And then also talk a little bit about what we've been able to accomplish together and kind of what the roadmap ahead looks like. So obviously a little bit about our organization, we have a number of different solutions that are kind of contained within our agency that we've been able to bring to fruition to help Kim with different items that she's working with. We have our HR consulting company that's part of our organization. We have a cyber risk analysis organization. So we're bringing all these resources to the city of Marion. And again, to the benefit of your organization, your department heads are taking it and running with it when we're giving them these resources. So that's exciting. A little bit about our team, and you can take this home for nighttime reading material, but we really do work in team centric. So we have four folks that are working in the public entity space. We work in it on a regular basis. We know it. We understand what that piece is. And so we're really pleased with that team and your team to develop our methodology for the city and kind of a strategic plan going forward, which is our goal is to protect the city. You've been through a really challenging time in your lifespan. And so we need to help create a strategy and how we're going to go from zero to 100. And that's coming with a couple of different things. One, giving the city more control, giving us more opportunity to have input into how we're crafting coverage. And then lastly, making sure that we have a voice at the table. And that really is our goal is working through with this. And as we look at this, that long range strategy sometimes takes more control through a financial perspective as well. We're going to be getting to a point where we're going to be spending our own money, not the insurance company's money. So that strategy has got to be dovetailed into how we create and what we do. So with that end, the insurance marketplace is in a little bit of an upheaval. We're seeing property rates across the state with different programs that are available to municipalities be at really at a troubling point. And so by and large, you're going to start hearing other communities across the state seeing increases in their property insurance rates well above 25%. And so we provided this benchmarking report to your team and talked through, what does it look like and how do we have that strategy? And so in front of you, what you'll see is that the present presentation we're going to give to you today is really well below what we're seeing with those benchmarks. So it's a positive in that, in that regard. And where is it coming from? Last year in 22, we had over $20 billion insurable events in the United States. Those billion dollar insurable events are putting a ton of pressure on reinsurance companies. We might think the wildfires don't really have impact to us here in Iowa out west, but ultimately we were buying reinsurance from the same places. So that reinsurance pressure kind of flows downward. And you know, obviously we're sensitive to hear that in Eastern Iowa with the work that we've had with the ratio. So in addition to that, when we benchmark and we kind of look across the board, really what we're seeing through the first quarter of 23 is an average of about a 20% property increase, which is a considerable amount. But we're arming your team with this information so they can make better decisions as we plan going forward instead of a kind of a whim of the marketplace. With that, this year we approached on your behalf and kind of the ideas, there are different carriers that have different, different insurance companies have different types of appetites where they want to be able to write different carriers. Not everyone is going to ride a dairy and then a municipality. So we want to look for the right fit. It's really with that go to market strategy that we went to the market this year and looked at options with a number of different carriers. And what we found with these carriers is that it's kind of the Goldilocks philosophy, right? Some are, we just don't fit exactly the right niche for all of them. So for some of the carriers, our claims were an issue. Travelers Hartford Cincinnati looked at our claims perspective and said, hey, we want to wait until the claims picture picks up a little bit. Then we look at programs like State's Risk Retention Group and Safety National, which are more self insured programs, which is definitely where we're evolving to. Those retention points, meaning the deductible amounts are considerably higher than where we would be right now and be ready for as a community. So million dollar type of retentions for each and every claim. So we evaluate those alternatives to really find the best fit or what we think we need to have for the city of Marion. That coupled with some of the ongoing challenges from the duration, we're able to really negotiate a renewal with ICAP, which is your current provider, which is a little bit more aggressive than what you've seen in the past. So we've been able to highlight and change some of those relationships that are there. This is your existing liability structure. So for million dollars per, excuse me, $2 million per occurrence with an excess liability layer above. That excess liability layer gives us extra protection for anything the city would happen to do to be negligent in our actions or failing to act for you as a board or for our department heads as well. Any questions on the structure, no changes there?
Questions? Okay.
Chris, so this is our current structure that's in force now?
Correct.
Okay. And how long is this? How long has this been in force?
So your structure changed last year. So this structure would have been the same as your previous year in terms of liability arrangements.
Okay.
Now, the rating structure looks a little bit different. And that's on this slide, you're going to see why we talk about 20% increases and some significant increases across the board. Really, your premium summary does not reflective of that. It's a marginal increase over across the board from what we were able to negotiate last year. So that's a, been a strong piece of the puzzle for you as well. So some of the touch points, we were able to, as part of our analysis and part of our discussion with your department heads, and they probably mentioned to you, we, we get pretty granular. We spent about an hour with each one of the department heads, asking them risk related activities, finding out what was on their dashboard coming for the next year, and trying to help them with some risk management strategies that will continue to evolve over the, the next couple of years. But for this particular renewal, we were able to expand your existing crime and fidelity coverage to address some of the exposures around electronic delivery, electronic delivery of funds, which continues to be a problem and changes with, we look at crime issues through ACH and through electronic deposits and things like that. And then we've also looked at some broad bond protection required by the state code for each of our individual department heads and as well as elected officials. We also looked at broadening the property coverage and expanding our blanket protection, kind of a different response to how we're going to be structuring that. And then finally, we included some additional liability coverage for non monetary damages. So if a lawsuit is brought that isn't just asking for money, but maybe is asking for us to stop a particular activity that will trigger coverage for those non monetary damages. So a very, very positive renewal in the short period of time, we've gotten to know all of your departments really well. We're clicking, I think, on a lot of cylinders. And as we hit the strategy going forward, it's going to open up so much more flexibility for the city to be able to be in control of the negotiation, not just necessarily always having to be beholden to the insurance marketplace. And ultimately as a community, that's what we want. So with that, I'd opened up, that, that was a lot in 15 or 12 minutes. So I want to make sure I'm open to any questions that I can answer for you as council or for department heads.
Questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah. So in, in one of the, the one graph you taught, you showed was talking about a 20% premium change for commercial property. But then the premium comparison for the next fiscal year is basically showing just a marginal increase. I mean, it's only a probably what 4%. So.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, Steve. Really what we.
How do we go from? Well, I mean, I just got my homeowners and was shocked. But so how do we go from this anticipated 20% to only holding it to four?
So that's part of creating that competition, right? Our role as an independent broker is to look at multiple of options. And certainly our existing relationship was well aware that we were looking at multiple options. So they, they want to make sure that they're not losing this relationship. So through that negotiation and through our ability to look at multiple options, we're able to keep costs in line during that process.
Okay. So second question I always ask, again, I've been on in Leanne's chair for many years. So the question always is, are there any risk areas that you're concerned about that the city does not have?
Yeah. So great question. I think the insurance market, so the answer is everything's insurable, whether it makes sense or not for us, right? Really how we've tried to view it and with the benefit of Ryan and Leanne's guidance is we want to understand what your departments are facing. And if we can look at what those areas are, it might be as simple as, hey, we're, we're doing some venue rentals of public spaces. How do we make sure we're protecting the city for risk? We're looking at saying, how do we help resources? As opposed to necessarily just transferring the risk and buying insurance. So that's really been our focus, Steve, is not always necessarily, how do we, what products do we not have? Just to say, what are those potential exposures? And if we can mitigate those upfront, we not necessarily need the insurance. So that's been a positive. And if I can add on to it, Councilman Jensen, it's, PDCM has also been helping us as we've been rolling out Marion University with the training aspect of it. So it's not just what can be insured, it's also how can we prevent or manage that risk better? So we've had a couple of our sessions already as we've been rolling out the Marion University where PDCM has brought in the trainer for our team members to go through and learn some of the things. So, so we're, we're putting those, those things in place also to help manage that risk better and hopefully keep our, our renewals down.
Good.
Great question. Thanks.
Go ahead, Chris. Chris, you briefly described kind of the focus of your interface with department heads and the administration. How do you see the second year of activity? If you could kind of compare and contrast initial engagement to what I would think is going to be more steady state and, and forward looking in terms of strategy, if you can put a little texture around that.
Great question. Thank you. I, that first couple of months is all about diagnostics, right? We have to understand where you're at, what your, what your departments are engaged in. And from there, we have a pretty clear picture on the items that we need to invest some additional resources around risk management, helping them to accomplish those items. We have about a 30 page kind of guidance document that came from all of those different meetings from areas where we can try to provide services and training to help mitigate that. That takes a little bit of time, right? So as we look at mapping out this next coming year, we're already involved in doing some of the trainings that city manager has mentioned. And in addition to that, we're looking at doing individual, helping different risk components with each one of those folks over the next year. Those will put us in a much more advantageous position as we negotiate with insurance carriers, right? They look at how quickly we have updated certain areas and elements of potential risk where they know those are issues. Great question. Thank you.
I really want to add what he's not going to say. And what he's not going to say is Iris back here is reaching out to us on a regular basis going, are you, are you ready to work on that next thing? Are you ready to work on that next thing? And we're like, whoa. So they are eager and willing and ready to just be making improvements constantly.
Good point.
Any other questions? Hey, great. Thank you for coming in.
So much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Appreciate it. All right. Our next item is a presentation on public service maintenance facility financing and related sanitary sewer solid waste financial models.
Seems to be wobbling tonight, isn't it?
Yes.
Or this afternoon. So we are proceeding with the second series of bond issuances for the public service maintenance facility. So in the same process that we did previously with the road use bond, we have invited Michael Maloney with DA Davidson to present the sanitary sewer and solid waste models for council's review and comment as we move forward with these issuances. Just same note we've made every time, these models will continue to be updated as more information comes to us. Like for instance, the solid waste study we know is a lingering item out there that once we receive council direction on which one we will go with, we'll plug that into the model and bring it back. I also, before I turn it over to Michael Maloney, would like to thank him for all the work that he's been doing, especially on these models. Because the number of iterations that I've asked him to do, because every time he sends me that model, I'll, I'll see something else. And it's, I've been trying to withhold a few and then give them a bunch at once, but it becomes a challenge. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Michael Maloney with DA Davidson, who is electronically with us tonight.
Thanks, Leanne. And I'll just kind of note as we move through the slides here, but let's go on to the first slide of content on the next page and we can get the conversation started. Just always like to anchor our discussions in regards to what we're here for. So that really nice graphic of the public service facility that's under construction. So we understand it's more than just the numbers that we're working on. But speaking of those numbers, let's go back to that slide three here. This allocation of the facility was something that we reviewed as Leanne pointed out as part of the road use tax financing discussion. That was the first tranche that was going to be issued that we worked through in March and April of this year. As noted, the next portions will be related to sewer and solid waste portions. If you recall, while we worked through with staff, a number of potential allocations for the facility financing, the ultimate allocation planned was a 30, 30, 30 split between the road use tax, sanitary sewer and solid waste elements with 10% from stormwater if necessary. So we'll come back after this process is completed. If and when we need to address the stormwater elements, but our focus for the rest of today's discussion is on the sewer and solid waste elements. Let's go to the next slide. Just a sneak peek of the timing, and we don't need to review too much of this in detail here for you, but we'll have some additional action steps coming to you this summer. At Thursday's council regular session, we will have some action to set the authority for some additional Suntory sewer financing elements. If you recall, we had a different set of allocations last fall. So that administrative process will start Thursday. We will skip action at the July 6, week of 4th of July elements, and then come back on July 20th with the remainder of the administrative steps related to both the sanitary sewer and solid waste financings. And then in August, complete the financing elements for this project. The reason to talk to you today is because these are going to be revenue bond issuances. We need to make sure that rates and charges are set sufficiently, not just to pay operating costs and debt, but also maintain the kind of coverage covenants we're going to need have into the future. The good news, I believe this is the third time we've now visited with this group in regards to sanitary sewer and solid waste review. And as Leanne mentioned, this is an iterative process. So we'll continue to update with new information as we get it throughout the year. Though we might be bringing this to you when we've got specific projects, feedback like the solid waste study, financing or your budget process. Let's go on to slide five. We're going to focus on the sanitary sewer fund and keep that focus for a few slides here before wrapping up on solid waste. Not going to reiterate every point here on the slide, but this is consistent with what we talked about previously. The three main factors that we have here are, we made an adjustment on rates in 2022 to ensure our rates would be sufficient for fiscal 23 and going forward. That was trying to take into account this potential financing, but we had some moving pieces at the time last summer, specifically related to Cedar Rapids treatment costs. Some of that has been rectified, which is a positive thing. The good news is because of that, even with our conservative projections for operating costs going forward, we don't believe any additional rate adjustments are necessary in the sanitary sewer side at this time. That being said, as we take a look forward and know increasing costs will be part of the puzzle for both the operating side and future treatment costs for capital. We want to be thoughtful about the plan in the future, not right now, to potentially adopt some modest annual adjustments to keep addressing future system needs. That'll avoid the need for shock type increases potentially into the future, just best practice from that standpoint. Let's go to slide six. So really what we're talking about here is a longer term approach. I made the point that we don't need rates immediately here for any reason to address the upcoming debt issuance. We're in good shape, but we're taking a look to the future. And as Leanne mentioned, we'll continue to monitor this. But with this opportunity to visit with council, we wanted to go back and just talk about those financial metrics, rate setting policies as we look into the long term future. Next slide. So a couple pieces of information that I will try to share with the city council whenever we visit is just where we stack up. And the city of Ames does a nice water and wastewater report each year. The 2022 report then is published in early 2023. So this is the latest and graded, greatest data we have of 42 communities around the state with population over 10,000. So kind of an average residential monthly bill. It's based on about 600 cubic feet would rank the city 24th of the 42. So kind of middle of the pack in terms of those rates and charges. I point this out, and I always add with anything on water and wastewater, it's not an apples to apples comparison around the state. It's nice that we're all of a larger population. That being said, the water quality, water sourcing and other challenges we may have are all unique to each community. The thing I do want to point out and focus on in this discussion, as we think a little bit more about the future without any urgent need, is that we did not address the monthly kind of base charges last summer with the rate increases. So that's really $4 per month. That means that on a kind of a typical residential bill, fixed charges are only 11% of the total bill. So with that in mind, we are very much subject to any type of volatility in water usage of which wastewater is based upon. So something to think about when we do make some minor or modest adjustments in the future to the sanitary sewer rates that we might want to be thinking about applying those potentially those minimum charges. That's a discussion for another day. You know, we, we needed to raise rates in spring of 2022. We've talked about what happened at that time. The combination of those rate adjustments that were made by council last summer and the positive movement from the Cedar Rapids treatment costs have led to this situation where we don't need to adjust rates further to accommodate this debt. I want to just be very clear on that. I know I've reiterated it, but that's the point one takeaway for sanitary sewer today. Let's go to the next slide. Just a refresher, I'm going to include this slide anytime I talk about rates, but we don't want to dwell on it. I've been focused on debt service coverage. So that's making sure that we have sufficient net revenues on an annual basis. We also want to make sure we have enough rainy day funds on a cash balance basis. So we talked about those iterative processes sees that Leanne and Brian and staff and I have worked through on these, we're always maintaining sufficient targets for both of these metrics in any scenarios that we run. Go to the next slide. Just the historical basis on the sewer fund. This includes through the fiscal 2022 audit. While we know some of the challenges we had with coverage for the last two fiscal years, the things we did last summer addressed that for a rosier picture for fiscal 23 and beyond. So again, just really a show in your work element here, we're looking forward through fiscal 23, 24 budget and beyond when we're working on our planning. Let's go to the next slide. And just the final summary, and I, I think we've definitely walked through this before, but you know, we're going to send you, continue to see additional costs. Obviously the Cedar Rapids treatment costs are going to continue to be a major driver. That was a big part of the discussion last time. Obviously we had moves in our favor over the last year. We think that's going to be over $500,000 less than fiscal 22 on an annualized basis conservatively. But with the major financing for the public service facility, that's what's fitting in there now. Additional needs on the operating and capital side in the future will need to be baked in as we think about where rates need to go. So no additional near to midterm capital needs beyond there are requiring borrowing that would necessitate this kind of discussion. That's the reason for today's talk is just, hey, we've reviewed this. We don't need to decrease rates to cover the debt that's coming up front now. But we will be coming back to you in the future as needed. Next slide. We've talked about those rate increases. Again, kind of hammering everybody over the head here today, but a couple of things. We are, we are subject to some of our outstanding debt. That's the 2020 bank loans. We've talked about this before as part of the road use tax financing. The existing lender was waiving some of the parity requirements, which is really positive in terms of not needing to raise rates to meet some of the other covenants that they have. The real focus here is that, look, cost of living type adjustments might be on the radar in the near future, but that's subject to any changes that we might see going forward. Probably enough on sanitary sewer for now. Let's, uh, let's just pause there and see if there were any questions before kind of rolling forward.
Questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, one question, Michael. So yeah, everything looks good on the sanitary sewer. So the major debt component we're talking about is on the public services building.
Yep.
But Cedar Rapids has already kind of given us a heads up that they're going to have some really large capital expenditures coming up in the next three to five years. I'm not trying to remember the timeframe. But if I'm looking at your debt service, I'm not seeing anything significant out there in the future. So is that something we're just going to tackle when that happens? Or are we trying to project anything at this point?
Yeah, I think, I think my point there is, is really about we're, we're going to need to make some movement. What that looks like is going to be based on what's our share as the city going to be? Where do things actually shake out for this year and next year with Cedar Rapids operational treatment costs, right? And then the final element of that is, you know, we do have certain considerations for some of the, the trunk sewer projects, whether those are direct or indirect with different sources of funding, et cetera, that match up to the city's capital improvement plan. So as those capital costs get allocated back from that arrangement with Cedar Rapids for treatment, that needs to flow through the city's CIP, flows to the CIP to designate the funding sources, and then it would be back to the model. And that could be the pieces that need to be addressed by rates. But no, you're right. We see that on the horizon and know that that's there and just needs to be quantified going forward. But preparing for that should mean of taking a look at, at some point in the, in the mid, midterm future at, at least cost of living type adjustments on rates. Though those aren't necessarily for what we're talking about today.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? Questions at this point?
Let's go to slide 13 and start on solid waste here. So you know, the, the concepts are really similar here, right? And, and, and the debt needs are similar. We're going to have some structure considerations for solid waste versus sanitary sewer. But you know, we're, we're not going to need additional rate adjustments or solid waste for these projects either. But similar to how we've got some considerations on the horizon for sanitary sewer, like Cedar Rapids treatment, we do have the solid waste study and there are going to be upcoming decisions for council to make later this calendar year that will funnel back to the solid waste fund. I, I think that should likely be on everyone's radar anyway. Leanne mentioned it at the start. But that's another kind of inflection point for us to, to spin this model back around again and see where we're headed and, and where we're going. Let's go to the next slide. So again, I, I think we are going So again, I, I think we are going to be talking about today, just hey, this is our snapshot at this time. We know the capital projects in front of us and in the CIP, there are discussions that are going to need to be had offline and, or, or by council, offline from the rate discussion as relates to the solid waste study. That solid way study is going to impact both operational and capital costs potentially. And that decision matrix will then come back to us. So it's a little bit of an iterative process there. Council will have the opportunity to make some of those decisions and then we'll be back to talk about the solid waste utility in more detail at that time. Let's go to the next slide. We've already hit on this slide. I want to just reiterate that the same type of finance metrics that we have on the sanitary sewer side, we're tracking for the solid waste side as well. So it's one to one, we're talking about both of these today, but just to reiterate, in case we're looking at this independently, same types of debt coverage and cast considerations that we're trying to consider as we spin each version of the model around for our target setting. Next slide. From a sufficiency standpoint, the solid waste fund has seen strong performance over the last several years. One of the challenges the city has and staff has communicated in the past is that we have some unique tonnage, uh, in terms of disposals relates to some of the derecho cleanup elements over the last couple fiscal years. So trying to find kind of a clear projection for upcoming fiscal years, we expect some stabilization to be happening on the solid waste side. That needs to be factored in from a revenue standpoint. So not only do we have the additional debt, we know costs will likely increase, we'll have other capital needs, but we want to monitor where those revenues are going to be going into the future. We'll try to stay conservative with those elements. But obviously, the last few years have looked really solid from a solid waste standpoint. Let's go to slide seventeen. So a couple elements here, right? I mentioned we'll be watching where tonnage goes. We also have an agreement with Cedar Rapids Lynn County Solid Waste Agency. So they can increase their tipping fees. And you know, really from, from a pass-through standpoint, the city is going to have to keep pace with those increasing operating costs. So there has to be some alignment when your agreement and partners raise their rates that you are subject to from your constituents. We need to make sure those are allocated appropriately. That's something we're going to have to continue to monitor on a go-forward basis each fiscal year and will continue to do so. There are some other capital costs in addition to public service facility that are outlined in the CIP. One of the key targets that we'll need to be focusing on, working with staff, is just that balance borrowing versus pay as you go. So we don't have additional debt baked into this model at this time and are trying to address this as pay as you go standpoint for additional solid waste capital items. So timing matters, right? So that's one of the reasons we want to continue to work through this model. We'll bring it to you when the important decisions are made, when, when it's time to, to have feedback from solid waste rate study, but as we get new information, staff and I will continue to work together to update that. Let's go to the next slide. Again, I just, you know, tried to lead with this. I'm telling you again, we'll tell you one more time in conclusion, we're not going to need an additional rate adjustment right now to be issued the public services facility debt. You know, where, where we came out from the fiscal twenty-two audit financials, we're in good shape from that standpoint. Similarly, you know, we want to be thinking about where we're going to need to be in the future. So again, some type of at least inflationary adjustments may be useful on, on either an annualized basis or in the near term. But we want to align that probably with some of the decisions from the solid race, rate study and the decisions that council be making in the coming months. Next slide. That's it. There we go. Any questions on solid waste?
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Absolutely, folks. Oh, go ahead, Leanne.
One last comment that I was just going to make is you're, you're of course going to see these models again as we go through the budget process and the budget calendar will come to you at the next city council series. And congratulations to the mayor. I will forever remember your anniversary now because it is my wedding anniversary tonight. Which is why I am going to duck out and let Brian take over her finance for me, so.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, I think, uh, it goes without saying, this, this presentation is the most detailed we've ever seen and the most, you know, thoughtful analysis of it all. So thank you. It's definitely helpful and it helps us understand where we're, where we're going and why, why we're doing what we're doing, so.
Absolutely. Great team effort with staff. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you to everyone. Okay, now we turn it over to the city engineer. We have presentation.
Yes, your honor. So, um, I don't know if you want to come down and accept this on behalf of the city, but basically.
I love to accept awards.
Yes. I expected he was also in the audience and Kim and I were able to go to Des Moines to the American Council of Engineering Companies and the Iowa Engineering Society at their annual conference. And during that, um, we got the twenty twenty-three honor award for engineering excellence and special projects category for the C Mar Trails, the Milwaukee Road Pedestrian Bridge. So we do have a picture of it during construction. So this is where we took down the existing railroad bridge over the Indian Creek, took it down, did some adjustments to it and brought it back up as an ode to our history, our railroad history. So on behalf of staff, we'll present this to the city and then I can add it to our trophy wall. We might have to add some more walls.
Very cool.
All right, then the next item, if Brian and. So what I want to do is give you an update. I know we kind of gave an update mid-school year on how the, the change, the one-way is going. So we want to do it again now that we've had a full school year to kind of talk about how their rearrangement to making this into a one-way on Fourth Avenue is going. So I'm going to let the experts that are out there every day tell us how it's going and open it up for questions.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Well, uh, so when we started this, uh, last year, prior to the one-way on Fourth Avenue, we had kind of chaos and, and I've expressed this before. And I, I know a few of you have, have, uh, you know, witnessed in and, uh, been a part of trying to pick up and drop off at, uh, at Vernon Middle School. It was very difficult, uh, after the one-way change and, uh, some adjustments, drastic, drastic improvements. I've had nothing but, um, praise from parents on the improvement, the traffic flow, being able to drop off and pick up much smoother and more importantly, much safer. So through all that, since we've, since we've had the one-way going for the entire school year, I've only had a few things that, uh, that I've talked to, uh, Mike and, and, uh, Ryan Miller about, uh, adjusting, working with them has been, uh, has been great. Got a couple, uh, couple additional signs installed and some markings, uh, some arrow markings, uh, to help in, improve visibility and parents' understanding of what, you know, where to go on that one-way, uh, left turn only, for example. Since then, I, I can only, I can only express like a couple of, a, a couple of other changes that might, that might help improve would be in addition of a stop sign at Twelve Street on the left side of the road, on the left side of Fourth Avenue. The, uh, we're looking at putting left turn only at Twelve Street, Fourth Avenue in the left lane. Forward, right turn only in the right lane. I have seen and tried to correct, uh, parents turning left from the right lane like they would in years past when it was multidirectional. So, uh, again, huge improvements and I, I can't thank you enough, uh, for helping, helping with this project. As far as, as far as, uh, moving forward, I hope that, uh, I hope that Fourth Avenue, we can, we can get the, the, the additional sign installed before the beginning of the school year. One additional, one additional, uh, one-way sign where staff would be coming out onto the one-way. After years of, of being able to turn left or right out of the, out of the staff parking lot and still gets a little confusing some days. So and then, and then lastly, the, uh, align divider up Fourth Avenue to acknowledge that there are two lanes, two separate lanes. I think those, those would be the only improvements that I could see that would make any, any additional improvement upon what we have. During pickup times, I can tell you that outside of, outside of smoother traffic flow, our, uh, pickup time has been sped up quite a bit. On average, uh, talking with Mr. Cochran, on average, we're seeing about ten to twelve minutes uh, on average and traffic is cleared after, after the bell rings and students are released. That's, that's quite a bit faster than, than years past. So, and then.
Twelve minutes from beginning to end for the.
Sorry?
Ten to twelve minutes for the whole entire pickup?
Yeah, for the, for the major, like, for the major masses of kids coming out and going to their, either walking or going to their parents' cars, ten to twelve minutes on average. And then drop off is even smoother. That, that goes, that goes quick. There's a couple, couple, it seems like they go in, in small waves, but by eight oh five, all the, you know, all the parents are have dropped off their kids with the exception of a few stragglers here and there, and that's normal. So.
That's great. Questions?
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I'm, again, I'm using that Fourth Avenue with my grandkids a couple of days a week, so I'm a user of it. I do agree with your lane markings on Fourth Avenue, uh, that that would be a nice, uh, change as well. Do you have any comments? Because one of the things we talked about a year ago was whether or not Thirteenth Street from third to fourth needed to be one-way. We decided to leave it as a two-way street. I, I've not seen any major concerns with it. Are you seeing any concerns with it?
I, in talking with staff, uh, nothing major. The only thing that has been brought to my attention with Thirteenth Street is that there is a tendency for parents to pull up and, uh, ride up to the stop sign. That has not been an issue and I think, um, uh, the only, the only issue would have been like parking too close to the stop sign or that, that's really been the only issue that, that's really been brought up. Parents have been really good on, that are dropping off on Thirteenth that have chosen to drop off on Thirteenth. Parents have been really good about paying attention to our staff who are out there directing traffic, whether it's myself or whether it's another staff member. They've been really good about paying attention to those, to those directors and making sure that they're getting clear signal that they can turn left, um, after they've dropped off their kids. So I haven't seen any major concerns outside of that, you know, minor parking. Uh, and that's periodic, you know, it, it changes daily, so it's not a major issue.
Yeah, every once in a while I still, when I, when I'm waiting there, uh, I'll get there about ten minutes before three. Every once in a while, you still see a car come up the one-way from Twelve Street.
Early on.
And you kind of want to jump out and say, eh, it's a one-way, you know, but, uh, you know, it doesn't happen too often. And I looked at the signage and the signage seems appropriate, but people just, I think, still aren't used to too many one-way streets in Marion, so.
I agree. Uh, I think what would help with that is having our, um, having our arrow markings there at, at Twelve Street. We have the appropriate signage, uh, like you said, that do not enter. Uh, I, I think that would help, uh, you know, signify that this is a one-way.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
And then, then Will has a question too.
You, you mentioned, um, let's see, lane marker, and some additional signing, signage, was that one sign or multiple signs?
A couple of different signs. So one, one-way sign, uh, that would be on the, be on the north side of Fourth Avenue, uh, near Fourteenth Street where staff are coming out of the, of the parking lot there, the staff parking lot. So as you're, as you're facing the school, having a one-way sign just a, just as a, as a reminder, because we, we sometimes have parents that park in there. And so it, it's a very short distance, but if we could keep, keep everybody going one way, that one way, that would be great. Uh, and then additionally, there is a, a need for a stop sign at Twelve Street on the left-hand side of the road. So with, there's a, there's a stop sign on the right side, just adding that additional stop sign on the left side.
So I guess the question that I would have and maybe, um, Ryan, I, maybe this is your department. Is there any impediment to having those things taken care of prior to the start of the school year?
Uh, no, we should have done probably next month.
Great. Okay. Super.
Well. Engage.
So the, the two suggestions I was going to have were exactly what you said, the painting of the road, the lines would make great, that would help out tremendously. And then the, the one-way sign out of the, the east parking lot, because I, I will say, I don't, my, my daughter, Sierra, takes the bus. So I don't do the morning and pick up and drop offs and all that stuff. So, but she's there for extracurricular in the evening. So that's what I see is the stuff after school.
Yep.
And usually like when she was playing football, I'd park in the west, I'm sorry, the east lot to pick her up coming out of the gym and all kinds of people were driving the wrong way to get out of there. I mean, there's no traffic at that time of day other than a few parents coming to pick up the kids, but excuse me. So that was the big thing. And then early in the sea, the basketball season, when she had early practice in the morning, what I would see would be your staff coming in and going the wrong way to get to the parking. I don't know if that ever got alleviated or fixed or not, because I was not there in that early in the morning anymore. And then, like Steve said, every once in a while when I'm there, granted, it's been a month since an extracurricular activity, so I haven't, oh, I take that back. Uh, basketball camp, the people, a couple of cars parked in the left or the, uh, west parking and went the wrong way to get out and go down Thirteenth. So I, I, off hours, still see stuff.
Yeah.
So that might be more of an enforcement issue versus anything the school can do.
Yeah.
So, but that's just my observations.
I, I agree with that. That's, I've talked to a couple of staff members for early morning when they come in. Hey, just as a reminder, lead, you know, be an example, you know, and, uh, don't come in the wrong way. And it's, some of it's force of habit, some of it is, uh, convenience. So I, I've talked to a couple of staff members about that and hopefully, hopefully they stop, but I know after hours, that's definitely something that has been an issue.
Yeah.
And I, it's something that I think is only going to be an issue if somebody coming off of Fourteenth tries to turn up there. There's.
Boom.
Yep. And, and that's, that's where we need, yeah, we need to get parents to understand even after hours, we need to follow this.
And some of the, just FYI too, some of the, some of the times I've seen kids on the mopeds and after school extracurricular stu- time zipping the wrong way down the street too, so.
All right.
Be tattletale.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, if you had heard any, just had any engagement or greater context given from like the surrounding neighborhood and what these changes have done, whether they've engaged like with it positively or they've pointed out some of these challenges. I'm just wondering if they had any feedback at all to this change in their neighborhood.
So there's a, there's a house on, on Thirteenth Street, Fourth Avenue, and then also a residence, uh, just south of that, of that residence. And early on, I had, uh, several conversations with those, um, with those residents and they have been very, very supportive and it, and actually helped push towards this. They recognize the need for, for the one-way and up to this point, I haven't heard anything about Fourth Avenue from them. The only issue I've heard from the resident, uh, I believe it's, I think it's three thirty-three Thirteenth Street. Think that's, I, if I remember correctly, I think that's, that's the address there. It's the one right behind the one on Fourth and Thirteenth. He is a made, he has made mention of teenagers at, well, he's presuming teenagers after school hours speeding down Third Avenue. And so try to do some enforcement there. His concern is obviously that a student crossing the street at, at Third Avenue. At, at Third Avenue is gonna get hit at Third and Thirteenth, uh but nothing. Um at this point, nothing concerning on Fourth Avenue, uh nothing but praise anyways.
Thanks. Other questions? Anything else?
Uh yeah, I, I would just like to uh invite Mr. Cochran up here, I, I wanna, I wanna thank the members of the council. Uh Ryan Miller, Mike Barkalow, uh Marion School District, in this collaborative effort to improve. Uh improve our drop-off pickup at uh, at Vernon, so I really appreciate everything. That all of you have done to help make this happen, so it uh, it definitely take, it, it takes a village, so I appreciate it.
Better things happen with collaboration, we've proven that over and over again, so.
I agree.
And the district would also like to thank you guys for your help and support through this process, um it's amazing between efficiency and safety. What we've been able to accomplish with just a few little changes, so thank you.
Glad it's working out. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next item is a discussion um regarding the request for proposal for the former library site, we have Nick Glue here, Medco. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Steve with type A and me can set that aside here. Uh good afternoon, I'm Nick Glue, president of Medco, and I just was asked to present and walk through the RFP document. That I think has been presented to the council, some of you maybe have had a chance to review it for a little bit and just entertain any questions or ideas or thoughts. I think as we set the stage for this, um I just wanna uh really reinforce that this is not our document. This is really a document that's represented by lots of input from our partners, Chamber, Main Street, some city staff. Uh Planning Department has reviewed it, and our job was simply to kind of pull all this information together in the format that it, that it's in today. So obviously, there's still plenty of opportunity for revisions, uh as you guys ask questions uh here today. So just a very high level, this is generally the overview of the document that's before you. Divided up in sections, our intent was to really kind of package a, a little bit of the history, the vision for the site. What's been done, what resources might be out there to influence someone's thoughts and ideas that they would bring forth from the private sector. Our idea is that this document can be used, not just by folks who are already in our community and understand it, but perhaps we can get it in front of folks that are not. Familiar with what's happening here in the core of the community and provide them with all the resources to help them really educate themselves about. Uh about what a project might look like uh here on the site in Uptown Marion, so. Throughout those different sections is where we thought, sought to really uh tell that narrative. Context is important, you know, we tried to, we tried to paint the picture that this isn't just a nice site that sits on the edge of. Uh a really significant uh park, uh really significant investment that's been made. But that it's really part of the history of this community, and so I think we, we tried to tell that story of the past. And also paint that vision and that story of reality is what's gonna happen on that site here in the months to come. Try to provide them an understanding of zoning that exists here, so Dave and his team looked through that to make sure we were representing that correctly. And then um lots of goals and objectives, right, I think this is where um everyone's input and feedback is represented. And I will tell you that even since you've probably seen a revision of that, I know there was some feedback about just saying even. Hey, hospitality could be a, a, a piece of this, and so um on page ten, I believe of the uh RFP. Um I made a slight revision around the diversity of commercial users and the potential of a tenant even being in the hospitality space, I think. We want this to not, um you know, we've had some back and forths about, is it too prescriptive? Um there's lots of things that you could do within this, I think at the end of the idea. We, we want to say that we have had some intentional thoughts, we have lots of plans. That really paint the narrative of what, of what we think the best project could be, so within all these parameters, you know. What do you think is the best project, right, so it's, it's kind of that balance, because again, this is just an example of them. Um you could look at the document, there's about twenty different characteristics or ideas, uh but just happens to be how the, how the proposal sits uh today. Um there's a scoring metric, oftentimes we get feedback from the development community that the way we review proposals is not very well prescribed. So we've tried to be intentional in how we break that up and how we allocate a point system, so that they understand what, what really might matter. Obviously wanting to have flexibility within that, uh I will say that the, the point, uh the, the weighting, the number of points. Per category, that's something that hasn't necessarily been overly discussed or overly vetted, it just happens to be kind of. Uh what I initially proposed as far as how it would be scored, uh coming back, uh when these, when these are returned to the community. Um and again, last page, or if you, it's probably best to view this electronically, because we've set this up to link to all these really important documents. Um we believe this project should be a representation, not just again of what we look at today. But really the journey that we've been on over the last ten to fifteen years, this is a lot of ways kind of a massive culmination project. Of many great plans, lots of great work from almost arguably everybody in this room to get to where at today. Um so that's really uh perhaps the shortest presentation in the history of Nick Glue, but um. I just, again, representing, this isn't our document, this is the result of lots of people here and how we're at least presenting this today, so I think we're very open to. Feedback, how we might make it better, um the timeline that's in the document is a timeline that again. Um not knowing exactly when we were gonna get through this, when you as a team might be ready to issue this. All of those dates um would, would be adjusted accordingly, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Um thank you, Nick, I appreciate the uh. Presentation and, and the changes that have been made, I already provided my comments, and I think they've been incorporated, but my biggest thing was. To not confine it, to, to convey the idea that we want something significant, something that, as you said, that. Is the culmination of the vision that we've been all working for, for so long, and that this, since the city owns this parcel, we have the. Ability to control one hundred percent of what happens there, and this is our chance, so uh and, but then, and, and then not define it. In such a way that it weeds out uh some potentially great ideas we haven't thought about, so. We want, we want to see what people come up with and what, uh what, what is possible, and then we can go from there, but thanks for making those revisions and for all your work on it. Questions? Will, go ahead.
Comment, not a question, um I was happy to see hospitality added in there, cause well, history lesson, from what I've seen online anyway, is. That the corner tw- or Eleventh and Sixth was the Biggs Hotel. So hundred years ago, it was an hotel, and then Lynn County Courthouse was right next to it too there, so lots of history on that, that block, so.
Gage.
Yeah, I have a question, I'm, after the discussion direction step, what kind of is the, like a rough. Timeline of getting proposals and.
That could be up to you, I might defer to Mr. Waller on kind of timeline for actually issuing this.
Um the, the draft right now says August first, I think probably will be in a better place to, to issue that. Sometime closer to the fall, start of fall, um we still have some work to do uh with some, with some other projects around. Around town, and then some of the other things that we'd like to do is make sure we've got kind of a recommended structure for council. But the selection interview, you know, interview and selection panel, obviously incorporate Medco, you know, our partners in Medco and the Chamber. Um all of council, um so we, so we still have some details to do, this is the first part of it.
One thing that we did discuss, even as recent as our weekly economic development team meeting this morning, was the idea of thinking about how the timeline might. Correlate to when developers and construction folks like to put plans together and pricing together and. Gee, would we like to put this out in a way that potentially positions someone to begin a project sometime next year? Or, you know, depending on if we, if we wait too far into the winter, the reality is, well, we're probably not gonna see a project in twenty. Twenty-four that could slide, something to consider, I think, with lots of, lots of moving pieces as that's issued is. We probably are in a period of time where if you would still get it issued in the fall, early part of the fall. Um that could be a sweet spot for developers getting a lot of great work done kind of in the off-season. And potentially still have the reality of seeing some kind of investment in the twenty twenty-four calendar year.
So yeah, my, well, first, my, my major comment is this is a very exciting, unique opportunity for the city to go through, I mean, an RFP. And the process that we're talking about for that very important block uh for the city, the one question I have is. Uh kind of the timeframe in which we send the RFP out to when we want the submittals to be returned. Uh and I thought if I read that, it was around a five-week spread between those two. Uh again, I, so I'm, obviously, I don't have any experience with this kind of a process, but my question is. What is the appropriate timeframe, is that adequate enough to get back the submittals with enough detail to hopefully have. Enough detail for everybody that's gonna be looking at it, to be able to judge it, rate it. Get a feel for, I mean, I don't know if we're expecting an architect's rendering of some type, uh so. Yeah, so I'm not used to this process, I just want to make sure at least that length of time is adequate enough that we give the developers and enough developers. Time to complete that process, so.
Great question, uh the answer is no, it's probably not enough time, it's probably something that's a good thing to point out, it's probably one of these highlighted areas that really. We haven't given very much thought to, but I would think that yes, you, you'd wanna have an opportunity for uh. A development team to work with our architect.
Yeah, I do too.
Paint the vision, I mean, what do, what do you usually respond to the most, it's the big flashy, nice, pretty pictures, right? So we're, we're visual people, right, and um I think to put a team in a position of being able to spend the time to do those, um. I mean, maybe two months is the right answer, five weeks is probably a little tight.
Yeah, I certainly want something more than a narrative, uh I also anticipate, I've had discussion with somebody else. I would also anticipate that certainly a number of people at the local area have already had enough time to think about it, they know there's bare ground there. They know this RFP is coming at some time, so maybe they've done some brainstorming, but to really do the exercise of. What do we want to propose for that site to the city, I think obviously is gonna take more time, so I just want to make sure. That we're allowing enough time for that uh uh RFP process to begin. And to get the submittal, so I didn't know if that was a little tight for that timeframe that was outlined in there, so.
I, I will say, I, I do know, and it sounds like you as well, there are already teams being formed.
Yeah.
Uh in the community in anticipation of seeing what's gonna be in this and understanding that timeline is. It'll be a very high-profile project, and I think you all will get some very aggressive, very exciting uh concepts to look at.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it's a really exciting prospect for the city that can just add to the trajectory and um great, even more momentum, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Nick, first off, as I read through this, um what I think has been created by the team. Is in essence a template for any kind of RFP that might be issued for development in and around the uptown. I think it's a, you know, the historical uh commentary, uh as well as the, the zoning requirements and everything like that. Um I think this is a prototype, and so I, I applaud everybody's effort on that. My next comment is perhaps as we ready ourselves for evaluation of um any submittals. But I think it would be important that we have some kind of a scoring rubric developed to help. Make it somewhat consistent of the elements of examination and then subsequently. Um assignment of point totals, and I, I'll use the first uh um evaluation criteria, compliance with submittal requirements. I think it'd be useful to say what, you know, that there's already a listing of what is critical within that, that we are expecting to see. Um versus um I might judge compliance with submittal requirements differently than somebody else. But it seems to me that, at least in that area, there'd be a hard deck um rubric we could create in order to uh guide our scoring. So just something for consideration, I think we use that uh in one of the finance projects, Brian, that we did. Um and it was really appreciated, cause it helped focus the discussion as well, yeah. Um so anyway, um thanks to everybody who worked on this, this is again, like I say, a prototype for others that um we might need to create.
Anyone else? Awesome, thanks everyone for getting it to this point, we'll see what happens from here. Okay, next is a discussion on uh city council meeting schedule, city clerk.
We last discussed the meeting schedule in agenda format back in November, at that time, we changed the agenda format, which started in January. Um this is just a six-month check-in um to see, get your thoughts, and if you'd like to see any other changes to the meeting schedule or the agenda. Format, shall open it up for discussion.
Any thoughts on, go ahead, Grant, oh, great.
Both G's, both G's. I have a cousin named Grant, that happens all the time too, with the family, um remembering um. This earlier discussion, I had written about it for the Gazette, so I perused my old story. And I had realized that uh Councilmember Atkins was the one that brought up times before, so as I'm filling the rest of her term, I thought it was fair to bring it back up. Since she brought it up in the, in the past, um and I think the thing that was still brought up in there, I think. My personal thought on the format schedule is great, the only question I just wanted to bring up to see if anyone had thoughts on it, where it was the Tuesday. Uh start time, and the things I'm keeping in mind, I understand that um. Everyone within the city, uh you know, two, two nights after five PM a week is probably a lot, but I was thinking about the community engagement aspect too. And, you know, is, is four PM on a Tuesday the best time for public to be able to make it to these meetings if they so wish? Um and I don't know if changing it to five or five-thirty on a Tuesday would make a big difference in attendance, but it at least gives that option. But I'm also still personally okay with four, I just wanted to raise the point and see what people thought about those.
I know I've been, been around ten years, um we used to, our meetings used to all be at seven-thirty in the evening. And we used to go, yeah, uh very late, but um so I'm, I like the schedule, I think it's working. Um I think people that wanna be here, I get here and uh but I'm certainly open to. Looking at it, or, or, you know, I, I just, I'm just not sure how. Much of a difference would make to move at a half hour.
For sure.
Um C D C Rapids has meetings at noon. Um so I don't know, just, just throwing those things out there for, for thought, but I'm, I'm open to being convinced that we're, that something needs to be changed. But personally, I think it's working, but.
Well, I'm okay with it as is.
So. Wanna think about it?
I, I, I'm okay with the way that we're doing it, I just, I was, when I read through the memo and saw again that we. Are the only city that's listed that does four meetings a month, blows my mind that other cities can do everything, it's just two. Two meetings. What's that?
It's the Marion Way.
It's the Marion Way, yeah, um. Uh my only thought was maybe, I mean, is it, is it more beneficial to staff to go to like just doing it on a Tuesday evening only? And having that, that, you know, four o'clock work session, six o'clock, the, the regular session, I mean, is that beneficial? And helps with staff with timing and everything and, and less work and instead of doing it the way we do it, or. And if so, I mean, is that something maybe we would try for six months to see how it goes, and see what we like better, cause we only know this way.
Right.
So back in November, staff recommended to either stay as is, or do the, I, Iowa City, I think is who you're referencing. Um they do the first and third Tuesdays, four PM is the work session, six PM is the regular session. Um so that was staff's recommendation back in um November.
As a reporter who used to cover Iowa City City Council meetings, it's not a fun system, and I wasn't even part of the city process.
Could make for a very long evening, I just think that at some point, you know, your brain just needs to rest. Uh just, you know, and, and it's nice to have, like some, a lot of times we do have things that get added. Between Tuesday and Thursday. So it's nice to have that, that option where, you know, that something can get added, uh, because it's an emergency or whatever it is. It's, um, I don't know, it's, it's good to have just those couple days to think about things from the work session, let them kind of soak in, maybe go drive by the property if it's a, it's an issue with a certain, certain area of town or property. So to be able to go check it out, to be able to even just talk to people and, you know, um, think about it a little bit and, and do our homework a little bit. Um, I mean, I think we've gotten much better at have, getting things to, to the council ahead of, we're not, we're not at, like, we used to be Tuesday and then Thursday we vote, and I think, you know, we're getting things, we're becoming more aware of things well before the week of the meetings. Uh, but still, we do sometimes have things where we see something on a Tuesday and just because that's just how it has to work, uh, and then we have to vote on Thursday. This is, to me, it's nice to have those couple days to just think about something and then let it, let it simmer a little bit. And so we're being thoughtful about decision making. It's not on the spot. Any other ideas or thoughts?
Yeah, so I, I guess, um, you know, hitting on the, uh, point of how does this existing schedule and separation between meetings, um, how does that, um, enable the cadence of internal city activity in order to, um, do just what the mayor was saying? And, you know, some additional research, uh, the addition of necessary items that, uh, you know, come up, whatever the case. So I, I guess, Ryan, I'm really wondering, you know, how, you know, what's, how does this fit with the ca, the natural cadence of, uh, effort that the, that city staff has to make?
First of all, we haven't, as a team, haven't discussed this since, uh, it was first raised in November. So, um, I don't want to speak, uh, without, um, really taking the, the pulse of the team. I would say this, though, that anytime we introduce a new, new, new system, it takes time to learn that system because we, we start building our, our schedules, our, our habits, our, you know, our, our staff meetings around the system that we have now. So if we do change it, it's going to shift. And, and then there's a, then there's a part of getting used to for you, for the public, for us. Um, and then we just won't know what we don't know until we actually get into that system. Personally, I've worked in a couple of different communities. Uh, most of those communities, with the exception of the county that I worked at, had a, had it where it was all your council meeting, your work session, council meeting was on one day. That makes for a very long night. The benefit of what we have now is, aside from it already being built into our schedule, uh, is the fact that, as, as the mayor mentioned, there are things that we can talk about today. You have questions, perhaps we have something that we have to get onto the agenda. I mean, we, we, um, potentially have a, uh, union, uh, our collective bargaining agreement with the police union. We're waiting for feedback from them, which we can hopefully get onto the agenda for Thursday, this Thursday. So with this current setup, it allows us to be much more agile, uh, with the needs of the community. Um, and it does also break it up a little bit, and I think kudos to the council for operating Tuesdays is really the work session. And Thursday tends to be the public hearing in the business section. So with you operating the way you have, it seems to be more efficient. And I'm saying that based on my experience with other meeting type schedules. So it's probably a little bit more than Councilman Harper you were looking for, but, uh, it, it's a perspective. And, and the more we practice something, the better we'll get. And if we did change it, we might have a night free, but we might have to maybe have a little bit more special meetings because something is more timely that we have to get to and so.
I guess maybe if we look at it from this perspective, like, what are the negatives? Are, are we experiencing issues with this current system? Like, have, have we received any, I've, no one's ever in the community said to me, oh, I, you know, I really wanted to come to the meeting and I couldn't make that four o'clock time here, like, you know. Have we had people complain about the, the, the time?
I have not received any.
I mean, has anyone received any comments from constituents or residents who want to come and are experiencing it, experiencing difficulty getting here for the four o'clock time for the work session or the five thirty time for the meeting time? Any, I mean, if we look at it from that way, are we, is there something we need to solve, you know, uh, otherwise it's working, right?
Well, one, the people who watch it online, it will not make any difference to them at all, whether it's all in one night or, or two nights. So they're going to be able to watch the same product either way. The other thing that would make it a little more challenging, if you put everything into one night, is with the number of closed sessions that we have, we're going to be having those special meetings at other days, other nights anyway. And right now, we just have them right after Tuesday night or right after Thursday night, which makes those a little longer. So with the number of closed sessions you have, you're going to be adding meetings, at least for a certain number of the staff people and for, uh, city council as well. So in the end, I'm not sure it's going to make a lot of difference, so. But I like the aspect of you've got a little time between the two. Uh, to me, I find that beneficial.
Anything else anyone wants to add, or I sense that there at least the general consensus is that we just keep it, at least for now, the way it is. And we can, we can engage with Sarah, um, as to say when she comes back to town, but I think, I think it seems like the consensus is just keep it the way it is for now. Thank you. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to talk about that and to, and, you know, since this is a public discussion, we're inviting the public right now, you know, if anyone has any issues with meeting times, please let us know. Uh, and we'll certainly then take that into consideration, so. Okay, next we have our city attorney with a discussion on the noise ordinance.
Good evening, council. Back when we were approving U T V ordinance, there were some concerns and questions about our city noise ordinance. Um, I want to address the first concern first, which was that we had some concerns that we would have in increase in noise complaints after the U T Vs were approved. Um, I'm happy to report that we have had zero noise complaints relating to U T Vs. So, um, that concern is a non-issue. And then the other concerns were with the way in which we measure our noise violations. We have both provisions in our code for, uh, measuring by decibel based on the zone you're in and the time of day it is. We also have some provisions where, um, there's a presumption that you are over that decibel level. For example, if you can hear a car stereo with a distance of two hundred feet, it's a presumption that it's a noise violation. And so there were some concerns about how we measure that and whether or not that makes it easy to enforce. I reached out both to code compliance and to our police department, and they have both stated that they would prefer to keep the ordinance as it is. Um, code compliance doesn't really deal with nuisance related noise complaints at this point in time. They could potentially, if we had a situation where we had an ongoing, um, person who were mowing, decided to mow their lawn outside of the noise regulations on a regular basis, that could potentially be civil rather than criminal. Um, however, how we have it currently set up, these could be either criminal or civil. And at this point in time, generally, they get referred to P D. That's where people make the call. And at the time when the noise violations typically come in, it's at night or it's in the morning, and we are not at city hall, but there is somebody at P D. Um, with regard to, um, police enforcement, generally, the calls they get are something that can be, um, resolved with a warning or a reminder, like, you're not supposed to do this activity at this level of noise outside of these times. Or it's a situation where, um, they'll write the citation for a disorderly house if it's a house party that's making a lot of noise or something like that. So really, we don't deal with a lot of noise violations. And in looking at our comparable cities, our means of measuring and enforcement are similar to what our comparables have. Um, most of them have either decibel or both the decibel and the distance. So when I took a look, there was nothing that was really out of line. And the two hundred foot measurement is actually something that P D requested a couple of years ago. So, um, that's something that I would not recommend a change to at this point in time. Um, as I mentioned, this is mostly a good neighbor ordinance. It, it kind of keeps a check on what activities you're allowed to do during which hours of the day so that we're not disrupting our neighbors, and it's a good thing that we don't have more complaints. It means people are respecting it, which is a good sign. Um, the only thing that was not consistent was our penalties. Um, we definitely have the lowest penalties of any of the cities I took a look at. Most of the cities actually just have it in there as a simple misdemeanor. They don't have a set penalty. It's not just a, um, scheduled violation. Most just state it's a simple misdemeanor or a municipal infraction. Um, the other thing is that we do have the muffler ordinance, and that relates to the U T Vs and other vehicles. That's actually a scheduled violation in, um, the state code, and it's set at thirty dollars. So we'd kind of be stuck with that amount if we wanted to continue that, which I would recommend we do. Um, my recommendation would be that we follow what our comparable cities are doing and make it a municipal infraction or a simple misdemeanor. Um, that being said, when we did the codification, there are some areas I need to clean up. We have a set penalty of twenty five dollars for a noise violation in this chapter. But then in our scheduled violations, we also have them listed as a fifty dollar penalty. So we're not consistent in our own code on those, and I need to get that cleaned up. Um, but when I go to do that, I was looking for some direction from council to make sure that you, um, would agree with the recommendation that we keep the enforcement provisions and the measurement provisions the same. And then, um, what your preference would be as far as a penalty goes.
Okay. So, uh,
So the first question would, would be whether or not there's any, um, anybody who would disagree with keeping the enforcement and measurement provisions the same.
Anyone who has any objections to, to that recommendation, general? Okay, so you've got consensus on that.
And then the second one is just direction on how we want the penalties to look, whether we want that to be a flat fee, what amount? Or if we want to make any of them that are not scheduled violations in the state code, we're, we're going to match that because that's what we need to do. Um, but with regard to ones that are not scheduled violations under the state code, whether we want to make them a set amount under our code or if we want to just have them listed as a simple misdemeanor.
Doesn't that then make it easier so that you don't, every time you want to change the amount, you have to go back and change the code? To just say it's a misdemeanor and then your violation's schedule can be, a, a new schedule can be adopted periodically, and you're not having to mess with changing the code?
That's correct.
Is that the benefit?
Yes, and generally, um, what we can do is we can work with P D if we want to put it in the scheduled violations provisions of our code, but we would just need to make sure we don't have anything that's inconsistent with state code. Um, otherwise, what a lot of cities do is they just do exactly that, and they have a simple misdemeanor provision in their code where they list out which ones have a set amount.
Okay, any strong objections to that, or anyone have a contrary, contrary opinion, or go ahead?
I don't have any objections, but can you clarify what the difference would be, uh, in the cost to an individual? Uh, if it's a misdemeanor versus, say, you got a noisy neighbor, stereo's way too loud, a party's way too loud. What's the difference between the cost that they would, uh, be seeing?
Nothing. Those are both, as simple misdemeanors, they're, they're the same range within the state code unless, Chief, do you know if disorderly house is a scheduled violation in our code?
The biggest difference between charging somebody with a city ordinance violation and a state code is where the fine goes. If we charge them with a state, the state gets a cut. It's like traffic ticket. That's, that's really what it is.
Yeah, that answers that.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, just vote, yeah. Kara, you mentioned, um, a municipal infraction versus a simple misdemeanor. Are those different?
Yes, so a municipal infraction is a civil charge, and under the civil charge, then you have to meet the standards for a civil violation, which are, um, not guilty beyond a reasonable doubt. It's a preponderance of the evidence or it's, um, sorry, I'm, I don't remember off the top of my head what it is for a municipal infraction, but it's not, uh, beyond a reasonable doubt. Um, and then the fine is largely different. So a fine for a civil infraction is a seven hundred and fifty dollars civil penalty for your first offense, a thousand dollars for every offense there on world. For a simple misdemeanor, the state code currently has that listed at, uh, one hundred five dollars, not to exceed eight hundred and fifty five dollars. So generally, if you go into court on a simple misdemeanor, you're not getting that eight hundred and fifty five either.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is everyone okay with that? All right, thanks, Kara. Chief Kitzmiller with an update on the automatic traffic enforcement program.
Yes, so thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to kind of bring you guys up to speed on where we're at with the program. Interestingly enough, I was reading just like a month ago, they actually now have noise and four, noise violation cameras that they're testing out. I think it's down in Knoxville where they put a camera up. It's actually got a, a, a decibel meter in it. And if it goes above the limit, it'll take a picture of the license plate, just like the speed cameras.
Oh, my goodness.
So keep that in mind. If we start getting a lot of complaints, we could, we could try to test that out here as well, but, um. So the D O T permitting, uh, we're, we're going along fine with that. We got some notification today. Uh, the permits basically, uh, involve where the, the cameras can be set up and where the speed signs or the signs have to be posted. Uh, they came back today. They said they wanted some larger signs, uh, put in, so we're, we're working on that. I think we're, we're on top of it. Barclos all over it, so we should be in good shape with that. Uh, basically, we're going to have, um, uh, the radar and four signs will be at the city limits, the signs on one fifty one, uh, southbound on thirteen and eastbound at, uh, on one hundred near Tama. And then they'll also be at the approach to the two intersections, um, right down here at the junction at thirteen and one fifty one, then over um, east post on highway one hundred, showing that it's going to be speed and red light enforced. The backroom processes, uh, that's, that's basically the business, uh, processes. We've had our meetings with them. They're fine tuning those. Uh, basically, we set the minimum, uh, speed for a citation is we're going to start at eleven miles an hour over the speed limit. Uh, we can go up and down on that depending on the need, on what we see. The retention period for violations is going to be five years. Uh, we looked at trying to do two years. We didn't think that was long enough with court cases, uh, so five years seemed like a good number to set that at. So we're not going to keep those forever. Um, we went over basically what the, uh, um, citations and what's going to be on those, that's following the policy. Uh, it's going to have a photo of the vehicle. It's going to have the intersection, the time, the date and all that. It'll have the, the process to appeal and what they need to do to pay it. Um, that will all be on there. And then with paying a citation, we laid out with them as far as the business plan. Uh, the first citation will go out. Uh, they have, uh, thirty days to pay it. Uh, if we don't get a payment, we'll wait seven days. Uh, Census Gatsel will send out a second notification after that seven days. Uh, we'll give them another thirty days to pay, and then we give them fourteen days after that, and then we'll tell them it's delinquent. And then we'll, we'll either go to collections or, or, um, go to a municipal infraction depending on, on the amount and what we see. The go-live date, we're still on, on schedule. Uh, like I say, as long as we get those D O T permits done, uh, I, they seem to think we're ready to, uh, go next, uh, they'll, June thirtieth would be the go-live date. Uh, we did set up that we were going to do the thirty day warning period. Once we get the cameras up and going to give everybody a notification, it'll, it'll be just like a citation. Uh, other than there won't be a fine associated with it. We'll mail them out, uh, let people know where they're at, uh, where the cameras are at and that they were, they were caught on camera running the lighter speeding. Um, and then that kind of gives us a, a chance to kind of play around with our processes internally before we start, uh, charging site, uh, fines for citations. And then the website development, uh, we're working on that now. We've got a meeting tomorrow to kind of tidy that up. Uh, basically, that's going to have, it'll be a link on the police department's webpage. Uh, it'll have locations of where the cameras are at. It'll have a picture of the mobile camera. Uh, we'll have a schedule on there as well as our social media and where that mobile camera is going to be deployed at. We'll do that at least twenty-four hours in advance because we're not trying to hide it from anybody. Uh, we'll also have links where people can either, uh, appeal to the police department or, uh, request that municipal, um, uh, infraction be issued to them. Um, and they can do that all electronically. All the payments that come in go straight to Census Gatsel, and then we get our money. Uh, the, the city gets money, uh, from the revenue every thirty days. And so Leanne's worked with them to set up the banking system and how that's going to work. So everything's tracking along. Um, no major hurdles. They, they think that as soon as they get those D O T permits, they're ready to put the cameras up, and it won't take long because they've already got them staked out on where they're going and everything else. Any questions?
Questions, go ahead.
Chief, I, I think I understood the collection timeline is something like, uh, this. Correct me Uh this, correct me where I'm wrong on this. Thirty days uh is the initial payment period. And then there's an additional seven days before they are re-invoiced. And then that has a thirty-day clock on it?
So they get seven days, so the I think the thought process was is that they wait the day thirty and they mail it in in the regular mail. We don't wanna hit them with a second citation if it's caught up in the mail, so seven days would be enough time for it to show up. If it doesn't show up after that seven days, they'll issue the second uh second notification.
Okay, and that and the second notification has a thirty-day clock on it?
Thirty days, yes, sir, and then and then we would wait fourteen before we would say it was delinquent. Uh we talked about trying to do a late fee associated with that if it didn't get paid and so we we didn't go down that road. I didn't think that that was something we wanted to do. Uh again, we can pivot on a lot of this stuff. Uh if we see that that's a problem and it's something that council wants to pursue, we've got that option down the road.
So does does that uh timeline um mimic what Cedar Rapids and other cities do?
Fairly close, yes.
Thank you.
Does there have to be a sign on the the signal saying camera here or anything like that?
Mike, is it a thousand feet before the, I think it's a thousand feet before the the permanent ones? You have to have the the sign posted saying it's it's radar enforced.
Gotcha. For some reason, I can picture. Signs somewhere, I have no idea where that's, you know, camera.
Anyone else? Anything else, Chief?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay, the. The next item is the review of the upcoming agenda for Thursday. The first item that's marked by staff is on the second page, which is A seven. Anything prior to A seven that anyone would like to discuss or have questions on for Thursday? Okay, A seven, Kara?
Thank you. So over the course of the last year, we've had um several requests from employees. Come in throughout our employee engagement um efforts, such as the coffee talks with Ryan Waller and just general department visits. Um the request is that um we need to make our emails that go out to all city employees and contain. Um information that's relevant to all of our employees more accessible to our staff who do not spend their days working in front of a computer. And one of the ways that they have requested that we do this is by giving them the ability to check their city. Employee email accounts from their personal cell phones. Um that comes with some legal implications. So we need to make sure that we're not violating the Fair Labor Standards Act and getting ourselves into um trouble with the Department of Labor by having people work. Without providing compensation. So what we've done in this policy is outline what procedures they would need to follow and what the parameters are for being able to check their email. Um for example, we don't want to turn their personal phones into work phones. So the expectation would be that they use their personal cell phones to check their email only during their work times. This would not relate to any overtime activities or anything that's approved by a supervisor. That would still be allowed. But the goal is to avoid the overtime. Um and also to prevent employees from not disengaging when they should be disengaging and taking that break that they need. So we also wouldn't want them to use their regular breaks or their lunchtime to do that. Um the other thing that um is important to know is that this doesn't apply to non-compensable activities. So if they are not, if it's not an activity they would normally get paid for, it's still fine to do that from their personal phone. So if they are checking their schedule or if they are looking at their benefits information, that would still be completely allowable. Because those are not um normal work activities. And the other thing that we want to note is that this is an optional policy. It's not required. We're not asking people to. To check their work emails only from their personal accounts or that they must do so. This is just really to give those employees who don't otherwise have the opportunity to access to those emails. And this only applies to our hourly employees. It does not apply to any of our salaried employees. And it would not change anything for the employees who currently carry a cellphone at this time. That's a policy that will potentially be coming down the line later on, but we have to do some more research on that. And um take a look at the cost benefit analysis to um what we would offer there. Um I would also note that we are currently um Lucas, Terrell and I, by we. We're going out to the different departments and presenting this policy to the employees who have asked for them and to the other employees who this would. Be relevant for. Um we've done two of those so far and we'll be um doing five more this week. And this ties directly into our strategic plan Team Marion focus area.
Thank you, Kara. Um just little bit of kind of historical background. Within the last year, uh all of our employees got a city email. So last, just about a last year, uh we still had a large number of our employees that didn't have city email addresses. So specifically in Parks and Rec and Public Services. So making sure that our team members are um aware of open enrollment, um you know. Quarter corporate games, other activities that we're doing, other important informational pieces we're we're communicating out. They didn't have that means and sometimes we, if they switched email addresses, we didn't have that. So that was one of the things that IT rolled out for us last year. Then we do have workstations in the department, so in Public Services and and Parks and Rec, we do have workstations. But when you have twenty-plus employees trying to access one or two workstations at a time, that's kind of where where a lot of this. Has come up as we as we had our our engagement opportunities with our teammates. So a little bit of kind of more more specific background to the why. So I really applaud the the team that has worked on putting together this solution and really trying to be responsive to the members. Of Team Marion that that are out on the streets uh doing the work, but also have a desire to stay in touch with everything else that's happening here.
The vote on Thursday would be to just approve the the policy?
Yes, we wanted council to be aware of this policy when it came forward because of its ties to the strategic goal of Team Marion. And um the relevance to the employees that have requested it.
Questions?
So I'm I'm thinking about the difference between a employee-owned mobile device versus an employee-owned. Desktop computer at home. And so in terms of the ability to access work-related email. That could be done essentially twenty-four seven, correct?
Employees do have the ability. We also have the ability to track whether or not they are logging in from. And a city-owned device or an employee-owned device. The difference is that with the cellphone, we can state. Which application we'd like them to use to do that, um namely the Outlook device. And we can set some other parameters on there and institute some security monitoring, which we don't have the ability to do from home computers. We are aware that there are employees who do log in from outside devices. And we're hoping to address that because it does present a significant security risk.
And it's not just a security risk. One of the things we talked about, uh department had a meeting last week was. With this specifically, we want to make sure that our teammates, when they're at home, they're recharging. They're spending time with their families, that they're they're not thinking about work. So try to make sure that we're also building that firewall around them so that they can recharge and refresh and. And spend that quality time with their families, so.
Are you telling me not to text you or call you at six in the morning like I do?
Um Ryan is not an hourly employee, so um you'll have to take that up with him outside of this policy.
It's it's not unheard of that we're communicating at five in the morning, but.
Yeah, I I have some more subtle. Uh you know, network security questions um that this all brings to mind, but I'll I I guess as we think about this. I first off, I I applaud this effort because this allows uh our employees to have. Um seamless access to uh important information that affects their day in and day out activities. So I I think that's I the objective is absolutely the right one. I just um I just have some other questions about network security and stuff that uh I'm sure Terrell will. Use simple words and speak slowly and my concern will be addressed, so.
Specifically or?
No, nothing right now. Just I it's just, it's just, as you know, this is just a general area of curiosity that I have. So let me let me formulate my thoughts around it and um I'll I'll check in with you.
More to come, Terrell. All right. Okay, everyone clear on that item for Thursday? Okay, uh the next item that's marked for discussion is F three under the regular agenda. Any anything for discussion prior to F three? Any questions on anything or? Okay, then uh we'll move on to F three, which is the resolution on. Using ARPA funds for the housing fund for Lynn County Housing Rehabilitation Program for the city.
Good discussion, Mayor and Council. Um want to take a moment to update you on the use of ARPA funds. Uh and so if you recall, the council has set aside uh seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars of ARPA funds to be used towards. Housing um housing program. Uh earlier, the the council has allocated up to two hundred thousand dollars for housing software to help um our staff. Complete their rental inspections and tracking and whatnot. The remainder, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars would go towards housing rehab. So similar to housing rehab programs that we've done in two thousand uh eight and thirteen. Improvements to the home owner occupied. And the ultimately, the funds would be donated to the Housing Fund for Lynn County. And so this is a nonprofit organization in Lynn County. And they are able to use that donation of funds when they apply to state grants to say. We've got this donation of funds and they can count that as their local match, ultimately getting additional state funds into Lynn County for housing programs. However, the the interesting part about this is all of the donated funds that the Marion would Marion would be donating to the Housing Fund for Lynn County. Will be used specifically for the housing rehab program. It's not that these funds are being matched for another project.
Can I ask a quick question before while we before you move on? So if they use this as leverage to get state funds? Will the state funds add to this to the Marion program or will they?
No, however, it could. Be used, the the state funds could be used in Marion for another project or.
But the five hundred and thirty thousand would would definitely be used.
All of it would be used towards our housing rehab program. So yes, I want to make that very clear to council that these, this is kind of a funnel to allow them to use these dollars as local match. However, all of these funds are used towards the housing rehab program uh within Marion. And then ultimately, the Housing Fund for Lynn County would contract with EC cog who has administered our previous housing grants. That were uh federal housing grants, so CDBG um funds. These wouldn't have as as numerous of uh federal requirements. And then EC cog would update staff on a monthly basis and then um council, we would update council. Semi-annually with the numbers of of how the dollars are being spent, households impacted and improved and what type of improvements they're seeing. Um and so just to just to reiterate, the housing rehab program that we would anticipate in Marion is owner occupied. It would be using the ARPA funds. It would be eighty percent of average median income or less. Uh it would include all of Marion, so we're not including targeted areas at this point. We we do plan to do targeted mailings um for for some of the. For some of the areas that that could use. The appearances that they would use these um better. First come, first served basis, so it's not put your name in the waiting list type of thing. Um and then the anticipated, the way that we have it spelled out is how EC cog would administer this is. The grant would allow twenty thousand dollars per property for improvements. And an additional five thousand dollars would be allowed to property owners if they match that dollar for dollar. And so they could, if they pitch in five thousand dollars, essentially they could have a thirty thousand dollar rehab to their house. And these are uh either life safety improvements or uh quality of life improvements. This isn't new brick facade on the house just because they want brick facade, right? I mean, it's it's siding, it's roofing, it's uh. Yes, things deemed necessary to um improve their quality of life. Any questions of staff? And I will note uh the ARPA spending, so um the line item uh right here. So five hundred and thirty of that is with council action would be um obligated for housing rehab.
I think this is a great opportunity just to to infuse um money and help for people with keeping up our. Stock of affordable housing and and and. Keeping that in good shape so that it's available for people. So I I'm I'm really glad to see this program. Uh I was pushing for it from the beginning. Uh for something similar to this, to provide assistance for people that need need help to just be able to. Bring their properties into a condition that they're kept up and um they can live in them and and like you said, enjoy their their quality of life in them, so. Ryan?
Just thank you for the presentation. Just um I just asked Terrell, so the remaining two hundred thousand. If council supports this program, um RFP was issued and we've gotten the responses. We got seven responses. Staff's going through for the the program, the community development program. So depending on how those score and what the cost is, the potential for having all of our ARPA dollars committed and spent. Within the timeframe will will be pretty pretty much uh next couple meetings.
Okay, um so questions for Kesha, comments?
Kesha, if we could back up once one slide. This this is more just for clarity of implementation uh as this rolls out and is administered. I'm looking at the second bullet point. Average median income. I should it be average income or median income? I'm not, I I've not seen the utilization of the phrase average median because they're different measurements.
Annual median income.
Okay.
Okay, so that I should say eighty percent or less of annual meeting median income, okay?
All right, by the way.
Thanks for clarifying.
You know, autocorrect, auto autocorrect and I are not are not good friends either, so. Okay, thank you.
Makes more sense.
Couple of questions, sorry. So is it is the estimate then that around a couple dozen houses will be able to take part in this with twenty thousand per property then? I mean, granted, some will have that additional five, but.
Right, and so um with the with the. Five hundred and thirty thousand, ultimately, there is an administrative cost incorporated for EC cog to perform their services, which is twelve percent. Um it's noted in the agreement. And so taking that off, you know, sixty thousand roughly off of that, the remainder would be so four hundred and seventy. Roughly, I'm winging it with math. Would be able to be used and so breaking that down uh five houses, you know, you're look you're looking at a decent number of of homes. And not every property is gonna use that full twenty and and like you said, some may use that full twenty-five.
Is this the type of organ like that's like it's a grant and then there's they have to live in the house for some certain number of years or?
That was a requirement with CDBG, however, with the ARPA funds, we are wanting these to be spent. And to have the ARPA funds come.
That element's not there, but it's a grant to improve the property, but it there's no requirement on how long they have to occupy it.
Then just one more if I could. I know it said regular updates. Do we know like what that looks like, how we receive those on on property progress and stuff?
It would either, I would anticipate either staff or EC cog staff presenting that to council. Either either work sessions or I can include it as an informational item in your packets.
Cool, I was just curious.
Will?
I agree with the mayor that this is a wonderful program. I'm glad to have have this being put into effect.
I'm glad to have have this being put into effect. I know this is a one time money that's being used for this, but it would be wonderful if something like this could be extended, if there can be some way to figure out if if there's another revenue source that could do something like this. And not necessarily even rehab, but also like with with Studd and other cities in the area where there's a down payment assistance when you're purchasing a home where there is restrictions on how long you live in the home, that type of thing. Stuff through IFA and whatnot, but city also being able to throw in some money. I'm sure there's money that has to get spent on low income housing out there, so. Continue continuing our partnership with EC cog to do something like this would be wonderful. That's all, no question.
We good? Anything else, Kesha? Oh, go ahead, Randy.
Kesha, I have one quick question on this. It's a little spin off on this one, but through the through this organization, is there a preferred vendor list that individuals might be able to participate in to provide these services that might be even more discounted than what general contractors would use to provide the same services?
Say that again.
So if I need, if I wanted to do a partial maybe I need to shore up my front porch because it's no longer level and it it was it's beneficial for handicap accessibility. Do the individuals then go out and get bids for that? Do they hire their own contractor? Do they just submit receipts? Is there a preferred vendor list that people can seek these services off of that might continue to keep passing along the buck or paying things forward, so to speak?
EC cog has staff that goes into the house and makes the assessment for improvements of what improvements are needed warranted. And then they put together a bid packet and they put that out to bid for contractors, so it's competitive bids.
That's what I was looking for.
And then EC cog is the one, you know, naturally, any anything requiring a permit with the city would get a permit with the city. So we'd have our inspectors out there, but then EC cog as well has their housing inspectors go out to ensure and track and everything to, yes, it's it's not a turn in your receipts for the work.
Perfect, great, thank you for that clarification.
And that's part of the administrative tracking with the with the program.
That's a good question, Randy. Okay, anything else to add, Kesha? Thank you. Next item marked for discussion is A one under the regular agenda. Are there any questions on items prior to that? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, this would be back on the regular consent agenda, G one and G two. Change order number forty one and forty two to Bush Construction. I I don't have any question about those specific amounts. I guess I'm just kind of wondering in the total project. Are we at what point does our payment activity stop on the project and we declare victory on it?
So for the building project, we have the lavatory shrouds that are still outstanding. And we have some electrical work for our technology items that are still outstanding. So those payments likely won't be presented to council until completion of that work, likely November or December of this calendar year.
Okay, that you answered my question, there's still work to be done, hence we're not at the end of our payment cycle.
Not we're we're close, but not yet.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on any item prior to A one under the regular agenda? Okay, A one, Brian McKenzie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is our resolu- oh, for Thursday, this will be the approval of the grant program allocation for the hotel motel dollars. So just a recap of the hotel motel fund very quickly. We did revise our hotel motel policy last year. And so if you recall, we kind of divided it into two sections. We had our grant program, which we opened exclusively just to nonprofits. And then the other part of the funding was going to be approved during the budget process. And that was for our local government partners and our own, like our parks and rec activities. So the hotel motel fund is a seven percent tax that's that's charged in addition to your hotel stays. This gets distributed to the city via the state. And by state code, fifty percent must be spent on maintenance, construction of civics civic facilities or dollars for the promotion of tourism in the city and the surrounding areas. But the city traditionally does spend the majority of those dollars promoting tourism and giving back to those hotel stays. So moving on to the grant program that we just went through, it opened in at the start of April. Was open for about six weeks and we had our review meeting with our committee, which was made up of three residents, two staff members and Mr. and Mr. Sernad, our city council member. And that was on the seventh of June. So. Doesn't walk anything. Maybe the best option. So we had one of the highest application number, $275,000 was the total request for fiscal year twenty four. And in our budget, we had $175,000 to allocate. So it was really nice to see we had a few new applications from some new organizations that we had not seen before. You can see there Indian Creek Nature Center, Trees Forever and Wake Up to Your Rights, the inter the intercultural festival. So our committee met, they had the challenging job of trying to stick to our budget of $175,000. So as you can see on the screen, here is the allocation of those dollars. So on Thursday, it would be the action to approve this allocation for the specifically for the grant program. The other hotel motel dollars was allocated during the budget process. So. I will open up to any 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 questions or not.
Questions? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
With Uptown Marion into nooks and crannies, what's that? I've never heard of into nooks and.
Sorry, that's actually a title there. That's the introduction counties for Red Cedar Chamber. The uptown Marion is with Brook and 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 our partners. On the on the main street.
That's why I was confused.
I apologize.
Working on the computer to say, wait, that's not what it said in the memo. Here's, so thank you for all this. Here's my one concern with this is our our, when it comes to the uptown Marion, our partner, I mean, our uptown district. And they're getting less money than last year when it looks like that we had. I mean, obviously, they're not getting what they requested, which everyone, and it's great that we have new 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 organizations that are requesting money, but I don't know if it's in my mind, I I don't know if it's good to take away from our partners that we already have been partnering with for all these years and allocating it to other things and which is don't get me wrong, I'm I like the other things that are asking for money, but at least give them what they got last year. Because I'm sure their budget is looking at at what they got last year and looking for more, obviously, but going down with our our partners. That that's what what I didn't like about this.
Councilman.
Yes.
Can as with any border commission that's recommending, so if there's I was not part of the conversation, I don't know, but since it is a recommendation, I mean, council has the ability to 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 move those around, so I mean, that is a appropriate policy level discussion.
But that's, I mean, that's a a limited number, right? So if you increase that, you'd have to take it from somebody else. It's not like it's coming from this from that fund that's not being allocated.
So the budget process allocated 175 for the grant program. It would be an unbudgeted item if canceled.
Well, Brian, what I'm suggesting is that operate within the budget and perhaps, I mean, if there's something up there.
Yeah, if if there was something that you saw that could shift.
And I don't have a recommendation of where to take money from. My my, I understand it's budgeted 175,000, but from what I'm seeing, it looks like there's $90,000 extra in the not extra, but received versus what was budgeted to be received for the year. So the money's there.
And that and that would be that would be presented to council as part of the the budget process coming up.
For?
For fiscal year twenty five.
No, I mean, what I what it shows was the budget revenue for twenty three is 300,000, the actual revenue is 391,000.
So yes. Was for fiscal year twenty three, we did perform above our budgeted numbers. But the actual that was in the budget for fiscal year twenty four for the ground program was specifically 175,000.
Right, so it'd be a budget budget amendment if you were to take.
Be an unbudgeted.
It would be an unbudgeted request or.
Yeah, because I mean, for me, it'd be hard to decide where to take that from the existing list. I mean, I think more than ever before, this list is true to the purpose of those funds. In the past, we've had some some things that have received grants that you know, may be questionable whether or not they really are drawing tourism or, you know, the the purpose of those funds. I think every one of those items up there I look at and I think, you know, that.
And all due respect to the committee, I know Randy was on the committee, I'm sure it's not easy to to go through and decide all that, so.
Okay, so. Any further questions? We're not voting tonight, so you can have time to think about it, but any any further questions or suggestions or clarifications at your. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so you know, I appreciate Will's inquiry on on that one item for Uptown. You know, maybe part of my difficulty on this is, you know, certainly in Randy, you're involved with it, but I don't have any visibility into the decisioning for each of these items and and the mechanism for allocating the money. So I guess if there's if there's a process that we use, I hate to use the word rubric again because I used it earlier this evening. But I'll use it, rubric. If there's a rubric or a decision matrix or guidance that is part of how we make make these decisions, I at least would like to see that because that then also might be responsive to kind of the fabric of what Will was just bringing up is well, gee, we'd like to see Uptown stay stable, but there's a couple others here that look to be having some alterations as well. So having that backdrop of the the decision calculus, if you will, or the guidance would be nice.
Yeah, and I can provide the council the hotel motel policy. So when we revamped, there was that, so there was a scoring metric that our committee members took on board with weighting, like I think you had mentioned, so the scores for each, whether it's a maybe a capital improvement versus operating expenditures. So there is a so there's a metric there that each check committee member scores on their own, we compile it together as an aggregate. And then that's our starting point, everyone's combined scores go into a document and that's a starting point for the conversations which are challenging to take 275,000 down to 175,000. So I can certainly provide those to the council.
I I think just being refreshed on that structure would be useful to us, that's all, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have questions or? Randy, go ahead.
I would just thank you, I just want to take a moment to say thank you, Brian, for all the work that goes into this. I'd like to thank the committee that participates in this, these are very complex. And to answer Mr. Grant's comment there, the questions and the thought process that goes into this is very, very complex because it does ask very specific questions about, you know, what part of this project does bring in tourism from overnight, the hotel stays? What kind of other funding opportunities does that organization have? Will this be the only money or is it being matched by other institutions? So there is a lot of complex complexity to this, it is a Rubik's of of by nature. So there is, and it's very challenging. I mean, skinny this down from two seventy five to one seventy five and and, you know, kind of going back to that. If we want to make up a couple thousand dollars, it's got to be taken a couple thousand dollars. So it's this is challenging, this this group puts a lot of thought into that, a lot of process. And and I appreciate it when they do make that recommendation like no other, just like all the other organizations and committees we have, when when it's finally brought and polished to the point where it needs to be brought to council, there was a lot of, you know, a lot of a lot of consideration that went into that. But it would be for total transparency to see those questions that are brought forward, but I I as well, I'm very solid on on what's up there. I know sometimes it's it's disheartening to see, but again, we it's it's, there's only so much money to go around, so it's we do the best that we can. But I just wanted to say thank you and again to the committee that, as in all committees, there's a lot of work that's been done behind the scenes for for council and the city. And and again, just thanks for all that time and energy that goes into to doing behind the scenes work, thanks.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else? Thanks, Brian. All right, nothing else is marked on the remainder of the agenda for discussion. Are there any questions on the remainder of the agenda?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, sorry. Who said that? Oh, Dave.
I had one one little correction item here.
Yeah.
F four and F five, F four is a public hearing regarding the rezoning for the property off of East Robbins Road. We noted noticed an error this morning in our notifications. So on Thursday, we're gonna notice was published in the paper, but it didn't quite make it to all the residents in the area, so we're gonna have to open and close the public hearing. There'll be no action items, F five will be removed. And we'll have a new set date on the consent agenda for July sixth.
Okay, so we'll still have the public hearing, but we won't.
Open and close it, no action items, so.
Okay, that makes sense, thanks for pointing that out. Any questions on that? All right, any questions on the remainder of the agenda?
Yeah, or advance. Yes, I so just prior to that, Dave, F two and F three. And I that just caught my interest for some reason, I guess, because it's a brand new park. And but the question I had about the agreement with I'm on, I didn't see any language in there about maintenance of the enclosure and keeping it in good repair, or did I miss that? My only concern here is is that we do have a brand new park. I it's getting used, I I'm amazed that on weekends, I mean, the number of cars that are pulled in there and kids climbing all over the the equipment. But with an additional structure going in there that belongs to I'm on, I didn't see a commitment that they will maintain it and keep it looking good. And is that even appropriate to ask for something like this?
On I it should be number nine, I mean, number nine talks about about construction and immediate post-construction cleanup, but then it also talks. It looks like we're going to be taking care of the mowing in the area in the area around the equipment equipment enclosure, but it doesn't say anything about I'm on's responsibility to the enclosure itself, so I will work with.
You know, I I was thinking about some of the things that we have to contend with, you know, graffiti or lights out or just whatever it is, I I don't know where we're at in the total process here, but I think they have some kind of maintenance responsibilities spelled out for for I'm on would be useful, thanks.
I'll I'll legal and add some language to that.
Okay, any other questions on any part of the agenda before Thursday? Okay, anything else from staff or does that bring us to the end of the meeting? Okay. Thank you all for joining.